Good evening, everyone. We are going to call the city council meeting for Monday, August 19th, 2024 to order. At this time, we'd like to invite up for prayer Pastor Tommy Wright from New Jackson Tabernacle to lead us in prayer.
Let us bow our head. Lord God, we thank you for your grace and for your mercy that you brought us together one more time. You kept us safe this day. And Lord, we thank you for our mayor, all the civic leaders, councilmen. We thank you, Lord, for peace in our city. We ask you, Lord, continue to bless, direct, redirect, strengthen, oh God. Keep us all safe. Keep the city in the name of Jesus. We thank you and we give you glory. We give you honor, praise for the living God. Keep us day by day. Guide us, oh God, guys, these each men and women, as they go about the task of taking care of the business of the city of Kenke Key and counties. Look on us, oh God, with your great mercy. Continue to spare us. Help us, oh God, to grow as individual, as community. Help us, oh God, to stand together. For we understand that we're better standing together than divided. The Lord bless us with thy grace and thy mercy, and we'll continue to give your name the glory, the honor, and the praise, for we ask it in Jesus' mighty name. Thank God. And the people say amen. God bless.
At this time, I'd like to invite Troop 300, chartered by the Marine Corps League Detachment 1253, a scouting troop to join us forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The troop is here tonight. They're witnessing a city council as one of their merit badges that they are seeking. And so we asked if they would lead us tonight. You can come out to the front steps. Yep, come on out all the way up. Flag is to the right, and we'll have you lead us in the pledge.
Please everybody join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to move on to item four, and that is public comment. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matters which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. Mr. Carl Aldrich?
My name is Carl Aldrich. I live in the second ward. I've been living in the second ward for over 25 years. And my comment is on the last statement that you gave, which was that we are not allowed to attack council men and councilwomen and department heads in this place, in this city hall. I just want to tell you, Mr. Mayor, that I was attacked verbally by these three men. Third Ward Alderman, Second Ward Alderman, and my other second ward Alderman. So what I'm requesting is that you add another line to your statement, that no Alderman or older woman or department heads can attack any citizen that comes in here to speak. I need you to do that as soon as possible.
Mr. Aldrich, what you can do is you can come to the city hall office, and you can talk to me directly about it.
Sir, I will not-
We're not going to change the rules that legal has written for us.
Well, then, what may happen, Mr. Mayor, is that it may degrade to like a fifth grade level. I've seen other city halls degrade down to that. I've seen people, you know, throwing paper around and all that and using foul language, and that's just not, no place I want to live.
If there is, if there is an instance, I would, I would highly recommend it. Please come to, talk to me at city hall, or call me, and I'd be happy to address it.
And I'm saying that no one's privileged here. Matter of fact, everyone, since you have a title and have practically volunteered for these positions, because there's no amount of money you can receive to do what you do. No one's privileged. They're not privileged to attack me, just the way you explained it-
Correct.
-in your statement, that I'm not privileged to attack them.
Correct.
No one's privileged here. And I absolutely recognize that everyone in this room has taken on an extra burden in their life to do what they do. But you have to start protecting the citizens, Mr. Mayor. Just if you don't, if you feel like you don't want to add it, that's fine, but what you're opening up is an exchange. And I went to, on my knee, about my knee to my higher power. I said, well, how do I solve this? My higher power said, you shouldn't have never exchanged. I made a mistake. I exchanged words with them. I had no reason to do that. The exchange got heated. My higher power said, no, you don't answer any questions. You never answer any questions. These people are here to serve you. I'm not here to serve them. They're here to protect me.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I agree. We're held to a higher standard, so I just asked that-
I'm not here to go back and forth with you. This is not question and answer. I'm sorry. This is my time. So my final statement here is that I recognize what's going on. But we have to nudge the needle over a little bit. We have to change the direction of this a little. I'm not trying to change it 180. Now, what I asked for was very little. I'm not going to ask for anything from these men. I, only reason I got into that conversation with them, because I thought two of those men were my friend, and I realized that they were not. Friendship takes years to develop, Mr. Mayor, years, on a daily basis. And I realized that they were not my friend. My name is Carl Aldrich. I served in the military for five years in the United States Navy. My father was in World War II. He served in the Army. My two brother-in-law served in the United States Marine Corps. And I've got friends in here that served in the service. And I do understand. My name is Carl Aldrich.
We will move on now to item five, roll call, city council.
Jones?
Present.
Noble? Johnson?
Here.
Cobb's?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Navares?
Here.
Marzak?
Present.
Swanson?
Here.
Tally?
Present.
Ocinga?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Malone Marshall?
Present.
Rude. Thirteen present, one absent.
We do have a quorum. Item 5B, department heads.
Kidwell?
Here.
Hyde?
Here.
Kubel?
Present.
Landwehr?
Present.
Sanchi?
Present.
Lopez?
Here.
Newton? Pigash? Nelson?
Here.
Beasley? King? Crosswell?
Brewer Watson?
Here.
Thank you.
Item six is our motion to approve the minutes for Monday, August 5th, 2024.
So move, Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Ocinga. Is there a second?
I'll make the second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Tally. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions requested to the minutes? Seeing none? Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble? Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb's?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navares? Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
The minutes for Monday, August 5th, 2024 are approved. Item seven is petitions. We have none tonight. We'll move on to item eight, communications, item 8A.
A presentation by the Kenke Fire Department recognizing Jacob Bellato on his promotion to lieutenant.
Mayor, city council members, thank you for having us. I'm here to present to you Lieutenant Jake Bellato. Recently, Lieutenant Mike McCully retired from the Kenke Fire Department, which created a vacancy, which Lieutenant Bellato took. Jake was hired January 1st, 2015. He was promoted to the rank of lieutenant on July 10th. He's currently serving out at East Side on Engine Four on C-Shift. His current certifications, he is a fire officer, too, correct? He's got a bachelor's degree in fire service administration from Waldorf University, and he also has multiple technical rescue certifications. Jake is, he's very active and involved in our departmental training, especially our internal training. He's served as a director for quite a few rookie firefighters. He's, he's also been involved in our apparatus committee. So the recent engine and tower ladder that we purchased, Jake was instrumental in helping spec that out as well. He's just been a great asset to the fire department, and we're looking forward to having him continue to serve the community in his new position. And with tradition, we usually have a family member pin his badge on him.
Congratulations, Lieutenant. Roll call, would you please?
Yes. A presentation by the Kenke Fire Department introducing probationary firefighter Sebastian Diaz.
Also, back in July, we had a retirement firefighter, Steve Robbins, retired. So we were able to hire Mr. Diaz here. Sebastian joined the Kenke Fire Department August 5th. He was previously employed by the East Joliet Fire Protection District, correct? His current certifications, he is a basic operations firefighter, and he's also a licensed paramedic, which, so once he's completed his orientation, we'll be able to move him right to shift as one of our paramedics. He lives in Joliet right now with his fiancee, Madison. We're glad to have him on board and look forward to a safe and healthy career for him. Congratulations.
I read item C. Item C, we have a presentation recognizing Sergeant Scott Monfordini, Officer Autumn Schmidt, Officer Jarrell White, and Officer Clayton Cahill for their work on July 26th, 2024.
Officers, please come forward. So what I'd like to do is recognize Sergeant Monfordini, Jarrell White, Officer Schmidt, Officer Cahill. They responded to a shooting at Pioneer Park on July the 26th. We had six individuals shot. These officers did an extraordinary job. I'm very, very proud of them. And I want to present them tonight with the commendation. I'd like to read that commendation to you. After that, I'd like to bring Kevin Bernard up here from Ascension St. Mary's Hospital. Kevin is going to present them tonight with a award of excellence. He's the Director of Emergency and Trauma Operations, so come on up here to just- Well done. I'm going to, I'm going to read the commendation and then we'll present your work. So on July 26th, 2024, at 11:50 PM, officers responded to a call involving shots fired in the vicinity of Pioneer Park. Officer Schmidt promptly arrived on scene and located the 16-year-old shooting victim lying on his back near the basketball court. Officer Schmidt began asking the victim questions in an attempt to keep him conscious, as well as checking for additional gunshot wounds. It was apparent, it was apparent the victim was hit multiple times and bleeding profusely from his back, arm, and chest. Officer White arrived on scene and immediately retrieved his first aid kit and assisted Officer Schmidt with rendering first aid to the victim. They located a sucking chest wound and immediately applied pressure to stop the bleeding. Sergeant Monfordini and Officer Cahill subsequently arrived on scene. Officer Cahill retrieved his first aid kit and produced a chest seal and pressure bandage. Officer Cahill, without hesitation, sealed the victim's chest wound and applied a pressure bandage to his back, while Officer Schmidt and White administered a tourniquet to the victim's right arm. Sergeant Monfordini assisted in keeping the victim calm and conscious while officers were rendering aid and searching for additional gunshot wounds. When the Kenke City Fire Department arrived on scene, Officer Cahill informed EMS personnel of locations of each wound and the first aid provided by the officers. The victim was released to EMS personnel and successfully transported to St. Mary's Hospital. Simultaneously, Lieutenant Koash received information that one of the suspects involved in the shooting still remained on scene. Lieutenant Koash directed Sergeant Monfordini and Officer Cahill to assist him with apprehending the suspect. The suspect was apprehended without incident and also found to be heavily bleeding from his leg and back due to apparent gunshot wounds. Officer Cahill applied a tourniquet to the suspect's injured leg. The victim was subsequently transported to Riverside Hospital. Officers located a third gunshot victim in the 1,000 block of East Birch Street with a non-life-threatening gunshot wound. Three additional gunshot victims were self-transported to the hospital. One firearm was recovered from the scene. Each of you went above and beyond the call of duty and exhibited extraordinary courage, decisiveness, and quick action while jeopardizing your own safety in an attempt to save human life. On behalf of the Kenke City Police Department, I commend you all for your actions, and I am truly grateful for your service to the city of Kenke Key, or to the Kenke City Police Department and to the citizens of Kenke Key. So thank you very much. I'd like to introduce Senator Bernard to you. Your actions that day saved a life. There's no doubt about it. We followed this person through several weeks of treatment. He has a future because of you. Your actions, I will read the certificate. We're going above and beyond the call of duty, valiant efforts to provide lifesaving care that was a success. Congratulations to each and every one of you. You were the talk of the emergency department. I am not going to fit to this. I received phone calls five minutes after you brought this person in. We also have a pen for you that says you made a difference, and you have. Your commitment, your dedication, your quick action, beyond a shadow of a doubt, saved a life. And to that, we are deeply respectful, and we certainly are very, very appreciative of your commitment or dedication to this community. Congratulations. Okay, I know it hard to follow up on that, but it was something that I'm talking to the chief and DC and the hospitals themselves, they did talk about consistently right after that night, that if it wasn't for their efforts on scene, the outcome probably would have been much different. So it's not often we do those recognitions, but to know that a 15-year-old's life was saved because of their actions on the field until the EMSU and the EMS and the fire department could get there is one of the times that we did need to do something a little extra special, so.
We'll now move on to item 8D.
Second Baptist Church is requesting street closure of East Mulberry Street from North Rosewood Avenue to North Evergreen Avenue, and North Wildwood Avenue from East Mulberry Street to East Willow Street to host their back-to-school bash on Saturday, August 24th, 2024, from 11:00 AM until 3:30 PM.
Is there a motion to approve this request?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Is there a second? Is that Alderwoman Noble?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second from Alderwoman Noble. Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb's?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navares?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
The request is approved. Next is item 8E.
Riverview Historic District is requesting street closure of South Wildwood Avenue between Cobb Boulevard and East Emery Street to host the Riverview Block Party on Saturday, September 14th, 2024, from 2:00 PM until 8:00 PM.
Is there a motion to approve this request?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Cobb's. Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb's?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navares?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
The request is approved. We'll now move on to item nine, standing committees, item 9A.
Building and code for Thursday, May 16th, 2024.
Alderwoman Malone Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor. We had our building and code enforcement committee meeting on Thursday, May the 16th, and these minutes were approved on August the 15th. We did have a quorum. We approved the minutes from April the 18th, and also the bills for the month of April. We did have the director's report. We did not have a adjudication report in, in the director's report this time due to the installation of the Lama program. We had no more discussion on the director's report. Alderwoman Noble, she did thank the code department for the great cleanup work that was done on Fairmont and Spruce, and the committee discussed the ticket procedure for tall grass and weeds. The director also reported that Ricky Rockets and Aroma Hill were issued grass violations and had to get the grass taken care of by May the 20th. The committee at that time provided information on the dumpster locations for our community cleanup. We had no executive session, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:02 PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Item 9B?
Building and code for Thursday, June 20th, 2024.
Alderwoman Malone Marshall?
Thank you. Okay, we also had our June meeting, on June the 20th, for building and code, and these minutes were approved by the committee on August the 15th. We had a quorum, and we also approved our bills for May. We had no minutes for, at that time, for the May 16th meeting. The committee questioned if the adjudication report could show the final result, and Director Nelson reported that the final results are obtained from the adjudication department and in-house counsel. The committee also noted that 182 permits were purchased in May totaling $102,847.44. The committee also discussed the procedures for obtaining permits, and we also inquired if there were a list of things that do not require a permit. Director Nelson reported that there was no list and that there were no items that were not, that did not require permits. Alderman Tally asked if Clerk Gall and the in-house counsel would be able to research the archives for a list of items that previously did not require a permit. The committee also discussed the city's website stating that there is a need for a keyword search engine to navigate the website because homeowners find it difficult to find codes and ordinances for the permits. the archives for a list of items that previously did not require a permit. The committee also discussed the city's website stating that there is a need for a keyword search engine to navigate the website because homeowners find it difficult to find codes and ordinances for the permits. The committee also discussed the ongoing issues with Republic not picking up a weekly buck item, and Director Nelson updated the committee of the code officers for each ward. Ward one, Kenyatta. Ward two, Susanna. Ward three and five, Carolyn. Ward six, Ricardo. And ward seven, Tenisha. In Alderman's questions and concerns, Alderman Cobb expressed appreciation for Code Officer Ricardo for leaving a courtesy note for tall grass while he was out of town and commended the code office for having, for doing a great job with follow-up. Director Nelson expressed her appreciation for the compliment because the code staff did not get the praise that they deserved. There was no need for an executive session and our meeting was adjourned at 6:08 p.m. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Next is item nineC.
Community development for Monday, August 5th, 2024.
Alderman Barron.
Thank you, Mayor. The community development committee met on August 5th at 6:00. At the meeting, Executive Director Brewer Watson gave the ECDA departmental report and made a particular plea to all the alderpeople as well as anybody listening here to take the ECDA's community needs survey. This is a survey, it doesn't take too long to do, but it does direct how we use our CDBG funds. It also helps to justify our CDBG funds to the Department of Housing, or Housing and Urban Development. So, if you have any social media capability to push that survey, please do. Ms. Brewer Watson also, or excuse me, Ms. Pettigrew mentioned too that there is a raffle that's available for people with children, that if they do take the survey, they'll be entered into the raffle for school supplies. Ms. Brewer Watson talked about the status of moderate-income housing rehab projects, also noting that both rounds of the Kankakee American Rescue Plan Public Safety Program, CARPS, are closed, so at that point, that can be reallocated by the committee of the whole. Also too, if you are looking to participate in Kankakee Walks, I know that a number of you have already done that, going door-to-door on Friday afternoons to give out information. Sometimes that email goes to our junk folder. There's too many links in the folder in the email about it, so just a message for all council people, that may be where the information about Kankakee Walks is going, so make sure to check that. We had a discussion about the Kankakee Regional Land Bank Authority. As you may have recalled, the Executive Director, Montel Crawford, has put in a request for additional funding, and we wanted to learn a little bit about the status of the land bank. Alderman Osinga asked about the number of properties in process, and the response was that currently there are approximately eight properties in the city that the land bank is seeking, titled using abandonment procedures, and six in the county. She also described a new policy that could be very impactful. Many of you are probably familiar with the scavenger sale. We often will see a property that has a yellow sign out front to be sold for $750, $800 or so. According to this proposed action, anytime they do that scavenger sale, there would be a restriction in the deed that says that if the buyer doesn't make substantial improvements to that property within 12 months, then it goes to the land bank. That's, that could be a big change in how we do transfer properties from a landlord who's not doing anything to improve the property to somebody who can wipe away that tax burden and do something better with it. So, we'll be looking into that further. We also discussed the 50th year anniversary resolution for the CDBG program, which we are going to hear in a few moments, so I won't get too much into that at this point. Also, Ms. Brewer Watson talked about an effort to reform CAB, which many of you may be familiar with as the Citizens Advisory Board. ECDA will be looking to bring that back as the community advisory board and looking specifically to alderpeople to help identify individuals from each ward to sit on that body. We want to make sure that we have strong attendance for that because again, it does help justify our CDBG funding and allocate funds for public service programs, as well as many other matters that ECDA does. With that, we adjourned at 6:49.
Thank you, Alderman. Next is item nineD.
Public safety for Tuesday, August 6th, 2024.
Alderman Osinga.
Thank you, Mayor. A public safety committee met on Tuesday, August 6th, right here at Public Safety Center, 5:30 p.m. We did have a quorum present. There were no public comments. There was no old business to attend to, so we moved right into the monthly activity reports. Chief Kidwell was present for the police department. They're currently staffed at 66 officers, but they're budgeted for 67. The hiring list is currently depleted, and the last two applicants are going through the hiring process. The lateral entry list is closed at this time. Police continue to recover weapons off the street. There were a total of 12 weapons recovered by officers. Patrol officers recovered 10, and K-MAG recovered two firearms. Thus far this year, there's been 118 weapons taken off the streets of Kankakee by officers. We currently have 160 Vercata cameras working, and they're very advantageous to the police department. They're looking to add lead capability to the Vercata cameras, but there is a one-time fee of $19,000 to add this lead capabilities. Four officers were recently assigned to the RNC conference in Milwaukee, and six officers are currently working the DNC conference in Chicago. The overtime cost for these two conventions will be around $34,000, but all that money will be reimbursed. The police department bills for the month totaled $101,851. We had a motion and a second to approve the bills. The larger bills for the month for the fire department, or police department, I'm sorry, a couple of them were accident enterprise for TASER equipment totaling $18,888, and dispatch service, which is always a big one, $60,514. Officers are very busy. Officers handled 6,159 calls for service in the last month, made 122 adult arrests and one juvenile arrest, and officers wrote 590 citations and handled 85 accidents. We went over the monthly activity report for each ward, and Chief Kidwell answered questions that committee members might have for their individual wards. For the fire department, Chief LaRoche was present. The fire department is currently staffed with 49 firefighters. They're budgeted for 51. They had two recent retirements. There are four firefighters in paramedic class with two of them graduating this month. There were two more fire personnel beginning paramedic classes in the future. Bills for the month totaled $83,203. On a motion and a second, they were approved by committee members. Some of the larger bills for the month were $32,584 for dispatch services, $9,223 for vehicle maintenance, and $5,100 for a new advanced sonar system for help with recovery in the river there, and $4,810 for fuel. The new vehicles have been ordered and will be delivered in the next couple of years, the new fire truck and hopefully in December of 2026, and the new aerial in 2027. Council members at a cost of $55,000 approved another used ambulance in good condition. I believe we're supposed to get that in October. Fire department responded to 723 calls for service. 440 were medical calls. There was one structured fire with a total loss of $6,000, and 18 calls for service outside the city limits to assist other fire departments. Thus far, in 2024, there have been 20 fires with a total loss of $465,400. Ambulance turnovers to other companies was 28, and this is the highest number in the past 18 months. The Fire Prevention Bureau conducted 129 safety inspections and installed 29 smoke detectors, and that program's still going on. It's a very good program. Chief LaRoche discussed the purchase of the water sonar equipment. This will help in recovery of people in the river. And Chief LaRoche discussed the numerous educational programs put on by the fire department. And there was no need for an executive session, and we were adjourned at 6:15 p.m.
Thank you, Alderman. We'll move on to item 10, report of officers. Item 10A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $285,301.50.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for the city of Kankakee?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the report of officers. Let's pay the bills in the amount of $285,301.50.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Is there any questions or comments regarding the bills for the city of Kankakee? Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes, I have to find it. It was healthcare and family. There was four or five of them. I apologize, my screen just changed.
Do you see that?
82822.
Yeah.
82822 was one of the check numbers.
Yes.
Healthcare and family. There is 82822, 2324, and 25.
Mayor, as Assistant Commissioner looks into it, I believe those are reimbursements from the ambulance. They've been going through quite a few reimbursements. There's another one on here too, to a gentleman. Okay. We're verifying right now, but I'm almost sure that's what it is. There was a hand, there was, and I don't know if DC can answer this as well, there were seven to 10 of them that came through.
I'm not familiar with that aspect of it, but I know that there has been some reimbursements. That's all I can, I'm aware of.
I remember Carla mentioning it in talking with Sam from Fire.
Thank you.
It doesn't really say anything but refund.
It's ambulance refunds, I'm confident.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check 82841, check 3784, and check 1431 to Pigish Engineering, check 82847 to Skyler Avenue Properties, check 3783 to Gordon Electric, check 1426 to Kankakee L.A. Construction, and check 1428 to Kankakee Ace Hardware to avoid a potential conflict.
Malone-Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for the city of Kankakee are approved. Item 10B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $739,766.18.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Is there any questions or comments regarding the ESU bills? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check 8, no, excuse me, 35291 to Barron Hewitt Oil, check 35311 to Gordon Electric Supply, 353190 Kankakee Ace Hardware, 35323 to Kankakee Truck Equipment, 35335 to Pigish Seminoah Incorporated to avoid a potential conflict.
Thank you. Malone-Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Report of officers for ESU are approved. We'll move on to unfinished business. Clerk, if you could read item 11A and 11B.
Sure. PB 2024-2-4, An Ordinance Approving a Conditional Use Permit to Allow for the Construction and Operation of a Ground-Mounted Solar Energy System for Certain Property Located Within the City of Kankakee, Kankakee County, Illinois. And item B, PB 2024-2-4, An Ordinance Rescinding the Prior Approval of and Denying a Conditional Use Permit to Allow for the Construction and Operation of a Ground-Mounted Solar Energy System for Certain Property Located Within the City of Kankakee, Kankakee County, Illinois.
At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our corporate counsel, Mr. Sanchi, and this has been brought to ordinance committee a couple of times. If you remember, probably going back about 60 days ago, council approved that on the floor, subject to legal review and some additional comments. It's been back to ordinance committee a couple of times. At this time, I'm going to, where it stands as of today, if Mr. Sanchi, if you can talk about the dealings we're at and the options available for council tonight.
Good evening, everyone. On April 15th, the city council approved this conditional use permit subject to the inclusion of some additional conditions beyond what the planning board had included. One of them was to prohibit the use of domesticated farm animals as a grass control measure. That has not been controversial. The other was the condition that is spelled out in the memo that was included in the packet. The mandate from the city council on April 15th was to prohibit the transfer of any interest in the property or the project or to a change in the operator without prior city council approval. Our office worked with Mike Kaufman and the mayor, as well as with Mr. Griffin and Eric Alves Desah, I think, I don't want to mispronounce it. In order to work on this language, we produced an additional draft. There was some back and forth. This ended up at, I think, two successive committee meetings for discussion. The primary difference between what's before you here and what the city council had mandated is that there are some exceptions that are carved out for the purposes of allowing NegZamp and Waldron Road Solar. NegZamp is the parent company, Waldron Road Solar is the holding company, to alienate, transfer, convey their interests in the property, in the project, and NegZamp in Waldron Road Solar, the holding company, for the purposes of securing financing and to affiliates, which is a corporate term for other companies under common control or under the control of. All this is defined. At this point, my understanding is that the language is largely all agreed to between what our office believes is as close as we can get it to what the city council's original mandate was and being acceptable to the developer. The only question that remained was whether or not to include the language highlighted in the memo wholly owned and controlled in the condition. The condition basically breaks down into two parts. The first deals with NegZamp and Waldron Road Solar's interest in the property. They have it under a lease, as I understand. They're interested in that, they're interested in the project and in the inability to transfer that. The second piece of the condition deals with NegZamp's ownership and control of Waldron Road Solar, and that's where this wholly owned and controlled language comes in. Our recommendation is that the city council approve this ordinance, 11A, with the condition language as presented. My understanding is that NegZamp may have a slightly different perspective on that. As far as the items on your agenda are concerned, the first ordinance approves the conditional use permit, which means yes, solar farm, with the language as our office has presented it. The second ordinance would withdraw the prior approval and deny the conditional use permit, which would mean no solar farm can be built on the property. So, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I think the developer had wanted to address the council, if that's okay? And otherwise, those are the options.
Counsel, are you comfortable with the developer? If you'd like to step forward and address the city council, that's okay. If you can come up to the microphone.
Pull it back for you? No, you're fine. Yeah. Good evening. My name is Eric Alves Desah, Development Manager for this project. I work for NegZamp. Alongside me is Jim Griffin, Counsel of Shane Banks. And first and foremost, I want to say that it was very valuable to work through the ordinance committee with a lot of input from Mr. Sanchi and yourself, Eric Curtis. It was a collaborative process, and I think that it has gotten this language and the condition and the CUP successfully to meet the spirit and the intent of the last city council meeting back in April. Having had the weekend to review the final proposal of the language that we received on Friday, I can affirm that it is acceptable as written. We're very proud to bring this project forward, and we think that it's a valuable development in a long vacant property, one that's going to increase the tax revenue for the city as well as reduce electricity bills for residents. And I do want to just finish with the fact that our company has constructed over 300 assets around the country. Not a single one of those have we ever sold. This is, and Waldron Road Solar is going to be no exception to that business model.
Then the only thing I would add to that, just to summarize, 11A approves the solar farm and allows it to proceed. 11B would refuse the solar farm, and it wouldn't be allowed to be constructed. And as far as it goes, this condition language is very strong. In almost every circumstance, they're going to have to come and talk to the city council before there's any change to who's operating the project, how it's being run, and who owns it. There are limited exceptions, but those limited exceptions are as well-contained as they can be without completely killing the project, so.
Any questions for the developers?
No, I just-
Alderman Jones?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. No, I just want, I just want to truly thank them for coming and working, with everybody working together to get this language addressed, because we truly want to see the project go through along with the savings and the tax revenue that will come through the city. I'm pretty comfortable with it as long as the language is right, and I've got the whole, from what I was hearing, I'm, I'm pretty good that we're covered, and I'm looking forward to them getting started. And I thank, thank you for all the recommendations you made for the, for the churches that was there, and you know, for the, for what you had put down for them, the changes, and with the water runoff and all the little things, and I really, really appreciate y'all doing that. And we're excited, and hopefully next year, we won't see corn.
Any other questions for the developers? Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion from the council for either 11A or 11B.
Mayor, I'll make that motion tonight, that we would entertain 11A tonight, that we will proceed with the project. I'm not seeing this. Okay. 11A, the proposal that, that allows to permit for the construction and operation of the ground-mounted solar energy system for certain property located within the city limits of Kankakee County, Illinois.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones to approve the ordinance listed under item 11A for the approval of the conditional use, allowing for the construction and operation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Noble. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ocinga?
No.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay.
The ordinance is approved. We'll now move on to item 12A under new business.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee. Handicap parking signs established at 325 North 7th Avenue.
We've got a few ordinances here, so this will go through. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight? We have a motion from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none. Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is item 12B.
An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 238 of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, establishing a three-way stop sign intersection at Cobb Boulevard and South Osborne Avenue.
Is there a motion?
Question, Mayor. Can we combine B, C, and D? Y'all the same word, y'all on the
Would you like, would council like to make a motion to combine items 12B, 12C, and 12D?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb to combine items 12B, C, and D. Is there a second?
Second.
I second. Everybody now.
We got, we have a motion from Cobb. We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this motion tonight on item 12B? Well, before we do that, Clerk Gaul, can you read in 12C and 12D also, please, for the record?
Item C?
Yes.
Okay. An ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 115, entitled Specific Yield Right-Away Intersection Established of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, rescinding Ordinance Number 1972-22, Yield Signs Established at the Intersection of East Dwayne Boulevard and Stoddard Place. Item D, an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 238 of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, establishing a stop sign intersection at East Dwayne Boulevard and Stoddard Place.
Thank you, Clerk. Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of item 12B, 12C, and 12D?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place item 12B, 12C, and 12D on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Cobb. Is there a second?
So moved.
We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordens, ordinances?
Got a word?
Ordenses passes.
Easy for you.
All three ordens pass.
There you go.
Okay. Item 12E.
An ordinance approving a Class A liquor license at the location of 251 South Skyler Avenue in Kankakee.
I did send an email out to everybody on this this weekend. This is the Grapes and Hops location on South Skyler Avenue. Effective June 30th, we were notified that they were, their state liquor license was not renewed and was not able to be renewed. They, their doors, I believe, closed on July 1st because they did not have a state liquor license. That then also null-imboids the city liquor license at that time. There is a new entity that has, wants to open up the same location. They have worked with the landlord to enter into a lease for the location. It'll be the same type of operation and atmosphere that Grapes and Hops was, except for there will be a different corporation or LLC, or however they hold title, and a different name because they're not buying the corporation. If this was just a straight transfer, we would have just done that, I felt, because it was a whole new entity coming in, that we should bring that forward to city council for approval. This is a Class A liquor license that is, was in existence there, so it would be subject to Grapes and Hops terminating theirs or bringing it to the mayor's office to be null-imboded before we'd issue a new one. The owners of this entity would be Brent Mono and Scott Erps. They have several liquor licenses within the city of Kankakee and are in no violations at this time on any of their other establishments. So I'm bringing for you tonight, their goal is to hopefully have this opening up, open and back operating. I don't want to put a timeline on them, but I will call this fall, sooner than later. That's the reason we're bringing it here tonight. Normally, we would have brought this prior to license and franchise for discussions. They brought it in the day after we canceled license and franchise, but they're hoping to get this maybe open even before the next license and franchise meeting. So we're bringing it straight to city council. So it's no additional liquor license. We'd still be at the same number, same location, new operators, same type of venue. So I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules that would interfere with the passage of this approval tonight.
I'll make that motion, Mayor Curtis.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Ocinga. Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Abstain due to a potential conflict of interest.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Abstain to avoid a potential conflict.
Baron?
Abstain to avoid a potential conflict.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
We have 10 ayes, three, zero nays, three abstentions.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Ocinga. Is there any questions or comments?
I guess I'll comment.
Alderman Marzak?
I can't vote on it, but I think any, anytime we have a vacant building and it can be filled, I think, you know, with a good history of the people, I think that's a good move.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call?
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Abstain due to a potential conflict of interest.
Swanson?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
Ocinga?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Abstain to avoid a potential conflict.
Baron?
Abstain to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
10 ayes, zero nays, three abstentions.
Ordinance is approved. Appointments, we have none tonight. We'll move on to item 13. Motions and resolutions. Item 13A.
A resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of the CDBG program.
Director Brewer-Watson, if you'd like to.
Thank you so much, Mayor and city council, for letting me read our prepared statement from our CDBG program manager, Marlena Califfet, who is in the audience tonight. We just wanted to come to you and let you know that we are huge fans of the CDBG program and its ability to channel federal dollars into local communities like ours. The CDBG regulations allow for local governments to meet the unique needs and concerns of low and moderate income individuals and families. This can be done through a wide range of activities, for example, through expanding and maintaining affordable housing options, providing assistance through public service activities, offering housing assistance and counseling services, and addressing public facility and infrastructure improvements. The city of Kankakee has received CDBG funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development since at least 1988. Across the past 36 years, Kankakee has received over $23 million. Because this is a formula grant, the amount of money received each year fluctuates. Kankakee's largest allocation was $102,000 in 1994, and its smallest was 20 years later with $459,334 in 2014. The annual program funding is impacted by the community's population, among some other factors, but it is also affected by Congress's lack of adjustment for inflation or to account for the doubling of participating jurisdictions in this program. In 1975, 594 entitlement communities received the very first round of program allocations. Since then, another 651 communities have joined the program to receive annual funding for a total of 1,245 participating state and local government entities. And as we mentioned before, program funding has never been adjusted for inflation during its 50-year history, despite the annual increases in program operating costs and construction material costs. On August 22nd, this Thursday, the Community Development Block Grant will celebrate its 50th anniversary. Today, we are sharing the proposed resolution with you, recognizing this important anniversary, which supports adequate funding levels and some programmatic changes to increase the ability of the program to meet this community's needs. Much like the CDBG programs need for public participation in order to shape local programs that meet our desires, this resolution is a great way to inform Congress of how this program can further support local governments' needs in effective program creation and administration. Thank you guys very much for reviewing this, and I hope that you will approve it so that we can share this message with Congress and hopefully receive additional funding in the future. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of the CDBG program?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Baron. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Any questions or comments? Mayor, Alderman Baron?
Excuse me, I do want to note, you know, just a little history with this program. This, this came about as a bipartisan project. I mean, back in 1988, it was a Republican administration, and the whole idea of decentralization and giving local governments more power was a, was a Republican pushed idea that put in play a lot of Democratic priorities. This, this is a program that has worked and showed what good government can do. Since we've been able to use it, I think, is it 23 million is how much has been allocated to the city of Kankakee? We've been able to use it in several different flexible ways to help people. At its root, it helps people. The, the second item here of what we would be asking Congress to do is to make new construction for housing eligible. As we've discussed in economic development As we've discussed in economic development over and over again, in community development, new housing is the toughest to really bring along. If this becomes a, a new tool, a new arm, it could really help the city of Kankakee. So I, I think it, not just to say that CDBG is a good thing, and I think it is, but also the specific recommendations we're making here could be impactful to our community.
Thank you, Alderman Barron. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
The resolution is approved. Next is item thirteen B.
Resolution waiving competitive bidding and awarding the Kankakee Administration Building HVAC upgrades to contract to Bright Architecture.
So we did bring this to the ESU Committee prior to tonight. I'll give a brief explanation. This would be paid out of Environmental Services Utility, much to what we had to do with this building about a year ago or lower a year ago. The HVAC system at the admin building is not working, and we knew that. We had budgeted for that this year to be fixed. Well, we did know it was going to need some issues, but it needs a lot of work right now. The boiler system there is not going to work this winter if we don't repair it, and it needs replacement. The part, the system there does not have parts available to fix it. It's an older system, and like a lot of things that we're trying to do, we're trying to make sure that we do this the proper way, that hopefully none of us ever have to deal with again twenty years from now, and do it the correct way moving forward like we did with this building, where we can zone it, it'll be new, it'll be working. And we also want to do the same system that we put in this building down at the admin building. That way, they're kind of, we've got people working on the same things if there's a part from one to the other that's needed. With that said, we had several HVAC contractors looking at it. It's going to need some engineering, kind of like when you build a building, you're going to need some architectural drawings, it's going to need some engineering drawings. We reached out to Bright Architecture, Mr. Doug Bright, to handle the bidding services for us and the construction services, basically overseeing it and along with doing the design services for the HVAC system there. The cost for that proposal is fifty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. It's kind of an emergency because it's going to take us probably sixty to ninety days minimum to get that working there, and we want to have heat come October, November, when it's needed in the admin building. But because of the large number, I wanted to bring this to City Council for approval. ESU did recommend this to City Council to move forward. This would start the design services, and after that, we would then have go out for bid with HVAC contractors to, based on the specs that are put together in the design services, to repair the service at the admin building. We did, as I mentioned, in this year's capital budget within ESU, expected that we'd have to do some type of work. We just didn't think it'd be this much. I think we budgeted roughly a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy thousand for HVAC work at the building. It could, we anticipate this will get probably north of two hundred, maybe two hundred and twenty thousand, somewhere in that range, but we won't know till we get our bids. But it is something that we really don't have much choice on. We're going to need heat at that building come this winter. So I'm asking for a motion to approve the resolution to hire Bright Architecture to start the process so that we can go out the bid for HVAC work at the admin building.
So moved, Mayor.
Okay, we had a motion from Alderman Osinga. Was there a second from Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Did I hear that correctly? So questions and comments? Alderman Cobb's.
I have a question, Mayor. It says waiving competitive bidding. You kind of lost me with that, but we're going out for bid.
So waiving, going out for, waiving the bid to go out to services for a proposal of a firm to do the design work and all that, to hire an architectural firm or a engineering firm to do the design services. We would be going out for bid for the HVAC work. That would be a company like, I don't want to call them all out, but, you know, whether it's a Precision or a Houlihan or several of the other, you know, M&amp;M, those type of companies would, I would suspect, would bid for the work of that. This is waiving the competitive bidding because to go out for a proposal right now for services for design services would take us probably at least thirty days or so, and then we'd have to go out and have them do the work, and we're just not going to make November if we do that. We do feel comfortable, we've worked with Doug Bright and Bright Architecture on several of our roofing projects, other HVAC projects here. It is a Kankakee company, so we feel good with working with them, and that's why we'd be waiving the competitive building on a scope of services of hiring the design service. But when we go out for bid, that would be for bid. That does require a minimum of ten votes to do that. It's similar to what we did when we did the ambulance services. When we went to go for the ambulance, we, instead of going out for bid for an ambulance, we waived those rights that, that night. I'm not a big fan of that. I'd rather us go out for bid. It feels like we're doing this a lot lately, but again, time is not on our side right now. Just the design and construction implementation is probably a minimum of ninety days. If you take that, that's September, October, November, we're only pushing December to get HVAC. Alderman Jones.
Yeah, how long did he say he was going to have before you get that turned around? His design, how quick can he get it done? That's going to be, that's going to be the key, like you just said. How quick can he?
They, they know it's a priority to go, but I do not believe that's in here.
Right.
The goal is to have, have this completed by November Thanksgiving.
Right, for his, no, his?
No, for everything.
Right.
Design, bid.
You're right.
Installation.
Exactly, okay.
Otherwise, we're going to be working in this building. I'm going to be a little bit of a smart aleck, but it will be cold if we don't have heat come November.
I mean, I understand the urgency. I, I don't know, just the wording doesn't, doesn't sit well with me, I guess.
The, waiving competitive bidding and awarding the, yeah, so it's, we're basically, because the cost is fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars, because it's north of twenty-five thousand dollars, it'd be like a scope of services. The best way I can explain it'd be like hiring an engineering firm to do scope of work or hiring a, I mean, we could go out for bid, is what you could do is go out for bid for design services. But we won't, we will not have heat come this winter. I'm, I'm just being, we, it'll take, we would not start, yeah.
You know, I don't, I'm going to let it go. I just don't like the wording.
Well, I'll, I'll let Legal, Legal, go ahead and talk about it.
I, I guess the only thing I would add to that is that architectural engineering and land surveying services are not typically subject to competitive bidding in the first place. There's a statute, the Local Government Professional Selection, Professional Services Selection Act, that requires you to use an RFQ-type system for those, which doesn't require the same kind of waiver. So the wording aside, the additional scope of services beyond design is really what this is aimed at in the, in the first place, which is more or less the role of a construction manager.
So is there a motion? Well, we do have a motion on the floor. We have a motion, and we have a second. Additional questions and comments? I'm open to them, but.
I have nothing else to say. Everybody's looking at me. Better you than me.
I will say this, as I mentioned in ESU, as I said, this was a capital-lined, capital-budget line item that we had put in this year's budget for ESU. We just thought we had more time to kind of get through it. We knew we had some issues with temperature control and some different things like we did here. So it's within the budget. It's probably, I, I think we budgeted one point five million of capital within ESU. This could be a little bit higher than we had budgeted, by maybe fifty, I'm hoping no more than fifty thousand dollars. The, the money is there, as we heard in the earlier budgets within ESU. We're in solid financial shape within Environmental Services Utility to be able to handle this and be able to pay this. And then somebody else twenty years from now can worry about HVAC. But that'll be nice if both buildings will be completely done now. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis. Navarez. Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We do have a need for executive session tonight under five ILCS 122C11 pending or imminent litigation, and also under five ILCS 122.6D, review of executive session minutes. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis. Navarez. Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
We are now in executive session.
Yeah.
Okay, we are... There are a motion to return to open session.
So move.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Alderwoman Johnson. Return to open session. Roll call.
Jones.
President.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
We have a quorum. We do have action resulting from executive session. Item sixteen one.
A resolution approving the content of certain city council closed session meeting minutes and authorizing the retention of certain city council closed session meeting minutes.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Item sixteen two.
A resolution authorizing the destruction of audio recordings of certain city council closed session minutes.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Tally. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
Osinga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. This time we'll move to item seventeen. Is there any city council member comments? Alderwoman Johnson.
Sorry. I'll make it quick. I just had some thank yous that I wanted to share. So I want to thank the fire department and the police department for everything you guys do. The big things and the little things. It's very much appreciated and I don't think you hear it very often. I would like to thank the traffic committee for our new digital speed limit sign in the sixth ward and to the council for the addition of our stop signs in the sixth ward, both on Cobb Boulevard and on Stoddard and Dewayne as well. Code, I wanted to thank Ricardo. He has moved on to another position, but he was great to work with in our code department. And I have now worked with Tanisha, I believe was her name, if I remember correctly, who was great and worked with a resident with me as well. And I would like to thank our ESU department for installing our digital speed limit sign quickly and for everything that they do as well. I know they get a lot of calls from me and emails and they're very much appreciated as well. So, thank you.
Alderman Osinga.
Mayor, because Labor Day is on Monday, the second. City Public Safety will be Wednesday, the fourth, at 5:30, right here.
And just so everyone knows, as long as you're talking about, city council will be on the Tuesday after Labor Day. Alderwoman Malone Marshall.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to thank the police department and also Johnny for how they handled the shooting on that that occurred out at Pioneer Park. I didn't have the opportunity to publicly thank you all. And I really appreciated how they were acknowledged for the work that they did on that night. And Johnny Wicks also, she did an excellent job that night, as well as Alderman Jones, he also came out. And I just wanted to say that I think it's so important for us to continue to address gun violence in the city of Kankakee. And then going forward to another area, we will be having our back-to-school bash, the first ward neighborhood, on October the fifth. It will be from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. at O'Fair Park. And we are asking for donations at this time. And we hope that everybody can come out and, you know, greet the children. We always back up the other back-to-school bashes with ours. We are usually the last one. So it will be on October the fifth.
Can you reach out to David and he'll get a memo or an email out to all the persons?
I sure will. And I'm also working on a flyer right now. And I was gonna shoot that through to him also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other Alderman comments? Any department head comments? EC Hyde?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief LaRoche just wanted to personally thank ECDA, especially Barbie and Marlena for their assistance with the CDBG grant for the Station Three windows and doors. It was, we truly needed it, and it's done wonders for that station. And so on behalf of the chief and the fire department as a whole, thank you for your assistance.
Mr. Pigas?
Thank you, Mayor. Street maintenance is fully underway right now, so they're kind of hopping around, but they, if you don't see them in your ward, I'm sure you will shortly. So they're, they've got four concrete crews out there, so they are, they're getting after it. So hopefully we'll get this wrapped up here in the next month or so and have a successful street maintenance program this year, so.
Any other department head comments? Mayor comments? I did want to take a moment and talk about the pension obligation bonds. We did go to the market last Wednesday, and it was a very successful day for the POBs for the pensions. The timing couldn't have happened any better, and that's, that's a direct result of city manager and Bernardi Securities and the legal that's all been involved with that and putting a plan together that worked out very well. Chairman O'Brien on the finance committee was very involved with that. As of last Wednesday, when we went to the market, the city borrowed $60,960,000, of which $59,91800 will fund the police and fire pensions and bring them to 90% as of when we layer that money in over the next six months here. That'll meet our obligation to be at the 90% level by 2040. Again, we talked about before, will be probably one of, definitely, you know, 15 to 20% of communities that'll be at the requirement at this point. As I mentioned, the strategy and the timing couldn't have gone better. I want to give you some facts and figures of how well it went. The money on that day was borrowed at an average rate of 5.34%. If you remember correctly, when we came on June 10th to you, the rate was 6.36%. On July 22nd, when we had our bond rating call, the rate was 6.09% and still trending downward. On August 8th, the rate was 5.81%, and I, I had met with myself, Chairman O'Brien, and Elizabeth had met. That was after what I call the market chaos. You saw that Friday sell-off. You saw that Monday was even a bigger one, caused great concern for me. Both of them calmed me down a little bit, instead this is still the right move to be moving forward and, and put all the facts and figures. And a lot of that had to do with Bob Vale, Bernardi, and city manager Kubal putting a lot of information together to last minute to make sure that we were doing the right thing. On August 13th, the day before the sale, which would have been last Tuesday, the rate was down to 5.42%. And as I said, on the day of the sale, it was 5.34%. And that was due to the market, and we had multiple entities vying for our bonds this time, which then allowed several of those tranches of basically sales to go out again for a rebid to three or four different entities and get that rate down even another few basis points there down. Interestingly enough, if we had gone to market on Thursday, the day after, the basis points had gone up 10 points, and we would have lost $500,000 in savings one day. So we hit it perfect.
Yeah.
And that's a good, that's good news for the city of Kankakee. We, it was a good day for the city, very much so. The savings by doing this, again, very nerve-wracking to borrow this much money, but back in June 10th, we projected an overall savings of 12.4 million, present day value of about 11.9 million. The actual savings by borrowing the money last Wednesday, by, if we had done nothing and still owed this money by 2040, we saved our residents $18.7 million by going to market and getting these bonds purchased. That's nearly a million dollars a year over the next 20 years that we saved our residents by doing it. It was the right move. And I want to thank all of you at the city council for taking a very big step forward, because it's, it's, it's a daunting task, knowing that we did that. But again, we talked about before, we thought we were gonna need to borrow somewhere in the range of 64 to 65 million in a second tranche, having that 32 million we borrowed the first time in the market working for us, got us below 60 million needed. And now, again, saving 18.7 million dollars for our residents over the next 20 years is, is extremely, I'm gonna use the word satisfying, because it really is. It's, it's, we, we did good as a team. So congratulations to all of you for trusting the administration's efforts, city manager, and Chairman O'Brien, and everybody what they're doing. Do you have anything you want to add to it, or I think I covered most of it, but?
No, I've been on the side of, over the years, there was one refunding we did where there was a world crisis that morning. We went out to bond. It was a small issue. And I just remember thinking, gosh, what terrible timing on a small refunding. This is, I think, in 2014. And then to be on the correct side of this one, you know, a lot of it was our strategy, a lot of it was the, the experts that we work with being ready to pull documents together when we were asked. But also then, sometimes the sun just shines on you, right? And that was a little bit of what happened to us that day too. So it was, like Mayor said, it was near perfect. We, we couldn't have done better if we tried. And, and I just appreciate everybody's trust here, because this is, this was scary. I mean, these are lots of commas and these are big numbers, but now we know what our liability is, and it's not an out-of-control one. It's in control. It's, it's in our control, and we did what we were supposed to do, and that matters.
So that's the update on the pension obligation bonds. We'll get those probably the end of the month, roughly, the money.
And, and Bob is going to come back and give a synopsis as well, once all the dust settles and, and the money lands, I believe, sometime at the end of this month into early September.
And then we will take that money and we'll layer that into the market, so that we don't just dump it all in at one time and have a chaos in the market again or anything like that. We'll layer that in and let the market do the work for us and move forward, so. The only other thing I wanted to mention is, because we won't see each other till after Labor Day, but the regatta is basically 10 days away. I do want to thank, we've had a lot of sponsors, a lot of the public, a lot of the businesses, a lot of the volunteers are stepping up for it. I can't say enough with the cooperation from the county, from the park district, from tourism, from the chamber. I think it's gonna come off as a very, very good event. And hearing a lot of excitement, everybody saying that they're coming back, so. There, you guys should have gotten some invitations, and we'll get that information to you for the Friday night event kickoff. And we've invited everybody from the county for that. And then just enjoy the, enjoy the noises and the sounds of the, of the boat races. Believe it or not, I think people miss that, that excitement of speakers blaring and engines revving, and it's a good thing, so. With that, it is now 9:08. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Alderman Tally is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rose, thank you, everyone. Oh, thank you, everyone.